City council meeting to order roll call, please.
Okay, here we go. Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Here.
Alderman E Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here, I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join in pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I need a motion to approve the city council minutes of October 15th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Next, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? I have no written communiques. Under mayor's report, before I go to homes for a changing region, a couple of quick announcements. This Saturday, November 7th, we'll have the Veterans Day breakfast at Salt Creek, starting at, uh...
Seven o'clock, correct?
Or eight o'clock? Eight o'clock. Eight, eight AM. It's November 7th, Veterans Day breakfast sponsored...
Is this still by the Park District?
And at Tascia Bank.
At Tascia Bank, but I thought it started at eight thirty for the...
Eight o'clock. It was eight.
I have eight to ten thirty at Salt Creek, and then the ceremony at the Veterans Memorial.
At eleven AM.
And for the volunteers, the breakfast is what time?
Eight o'clock. Starts at eight o'clock.
Next, we do have the question and answer session with the FAA. For all residents who wish to have some questions answered by the FAA on November 16th, Monday, November 16th, at the Finance Auditorium at Wood Dale Junior High from seven PM to eight thirty.
Is it in the auditorium?
In the auditorium. Wood Dale Junior High Auditorium, yes. Next, we have a report...
Mayor, with that FAA meeting?
Yes.
Are we doing another reverse nine-one-one, or is that the only one that's going on?
There will be another reverse nine-one-one going out. I believe we're gonna do it next Thursday. Thursday, not, uh, not Wednesday, 'cause Wednesday is Memorial Day. Or, yeah, Veterans Day, I'm sorry. So it'll be go out Thursday, and there was a question about Friday. We're gonna do it on Thursday instead. Is that correct, Chief? And all the, all the elected should have received 200 flyers, so you can pass those out throughout the neighborhood and get the word out. All right, and I believe, um, we have some banners. I'm not sure, they're, they're not up yet. Correct, Matt? We've got some banners ordered, or Chief?
Jeff? We were gonna order a couple banners and then use the city electronic sign and place them around town, but that hasn't been... They're not up yet.
Right, they do, may, hopefully by the end of this week. And we'll probably have them at, uh, Wood Dale Irving, maybe by, uh, Addison and Irving Park by the jewel. There was discussion about over at Deer Path One and over at, uh, Prospect and, uh, Media.
What about the train station?
We're gonna have flyers at, should be at businesses. Some of the flyers, like you guys just received, should be larger ones, I think, eleven by sixteen. Chief, I don't know, or Jeff, who knows that?
Yeah, there's eleven by seventeen flyers that'll go around. CSOs will be dropping them off, and I also reached out to School District Seven, and they're, they're putting the information in the virtual backpack. And I talked to all the other taxing bodies, and they agreed to display the flyers, so...
Right, so they'll be in the, some of the businesses and, uh, train stations as well. And City Hall, of course. Alderman Jacob?
For the, uh, for Ward One, I know we're gonna do Deer Path. What about maybe Foster or something, Award Four? Would it be worthwhile to have something over there?
Jeff?
We placed an order, I think, for four, four or five banners, plus we have the mobile electronic sign, so we're gonna map out some spots and put it out there.
Okay. Next, we have Kendra Smith from CMAP here to give a little presentation. I, do we have a... Oh, Kelly, you can help her. Okay.
Good evening. I just wanted to give a brief introduction, 'cause I know it's been quite some time since the council approved a memorandum of understanding with CMAP to provide essentially a housing study, which is the Homes for a Changing Region. And this study, um, or, I'm sorry, the agreement that you entered into, or the memorandum of understanding, provided, allowed CMAP to conduct this study essentially free. And the study is, identifies housing supply and demand dynamics in order for the city to be able to create a housing plan then from the findings. In January of last year, the council received a presentation from CMAP with those findings, and this is actually just the conclusion of that process. Turn it over to Kendra.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Good aft, or good evening. It's been a long day. Um, as the mayor said, my name is Kendra Smith. I'm a senior planner with the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, uh, and we are the regional planning agency for the seven counties in northeastern Illinois. Um, so we, I'm gonna talk a little bit tonight about the Homes for a Changing Region Plan, which I believe you all have in front of me at any time. Feel free to just interrupt and ask questions. Very informal, just wanna make sure that, um, we report back what we did, but also get all of your questions answered. So this project is a collaboration between us, the Metropolitan Planning Council, and the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. And what we do, um, is we tend to work with clusters of communities. This has historically been a, a project that we've done in, in Cook County, um, and then starting with this cluster in DuPage. This is the first time that we've done this study outside of Cook County. And so it's a collaboration of four communities. We try to pick communities that share borders or share characteristics or some kind of combination of the two. So, uh, this is an Addison, Bensonville, Wood Dale, and Villa Park study. Um, and so we look at each community individually, but we also look at them together in what we call a subregional plan with DuPage County as well, to not only look at your housing conditions within your borders, but also the housing conditions of your neighbors and how that can affect you, but also the housing conditions of the county overall. And so the process, as Kelly mentioned, we were here, um, last January to present our initial kind of data findings, existing conditions, um, report, if you will. Um, and so that, for us, was, um, speaking with, uh, some key stakeholders in the community, um, in the housing and, and real estate development, and also the realty, um, sectors, as well as some of, um, the city officials. We also did a MetroQuest site. MetroQuest site is an online engagement tool that allows citizens to participate, um, in public processes without having to come to a public meeting. And so we hosted this website, um, which folks could access from their home computers. But we also had a traveling, um, kiosk that was in the lobby of City Hall in early January. And we also had it placed at the public library for folks that didn't have access, um, either at home or through their, um, mobile phones. For all four communities, we had just over 700 participants respond to the survey questions, with just under 100 of those being Wood Dale, either residents or folks that worked in, in Wood Dale. So, um, I've never been to a public meeting that had 100 people at one time. So, um, 100 is, is, you know, really successful. We did a mapping exercise, we did visual preference survey, um, and then just some general planning questions to kind of get some feedback there for the report. From there, we drafted municipal recommendations. So specifically, what, um, does housing demand and future projections look like for Wood Dale specifically? And then moved into subregional recommendations, considering the county and all four of the communities together. Um, reviewed the draft plan, which we, um, since we started, um, we've had a, a change in staff here. Um, so we were working with the previous community development staff, and then finished the completion of the plan with the new community development staff. So we've had, um, a lot of input, um, and so we just wanted to bring the final piece to you and, and let you guys ask any questions, kind of go through some of the key recommendations, not everything. Um, we're not gonna go through the whole thing tonight, but if you have any questions, if you'd have time to, to browse through it, feel free to, um, ask those. So the first thing we start with is kind of, um, just a general profile of Wood Dale. Who's here? Who's leaving? Who's coming? Um, and what their projections are. So you can see here, um, just the change in population between the 2010 census and, um, American Community Survey. So slight population increase, slight decrease in households, but 2% is, is not a lot. Um, and then as an agency, we run what we call the Go-To 2040, which is the regional plan, uh, population projections. To say in 2040, the region continues to grow, um, and based on some other data projections, what can communities expect to look like? And so you'll see for Wood Dale, um, the projected population growth is 34%, up to just over, um, 18,000. And you'll also see your household growth there at 33%. Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't get that.
Somebody's phone has a question, too. Go ahead.
I'm just curious why you...
Yeah.
Hold on. You have a, do you have a question?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Alderman Messina?
Sorry.
Go ahead, sorry.
So, when I look at the population for 2011, why is it you guys use the American Community Survey versus census?
So the census data comes out every two years, which is, um, the 2000. And then the 2010 census data, because of some of the categories changing, we used ACS because it gives us a broader, um... It's a, it's a, what do I wanna say? It's an average, um, of, of data that comes from the cen, in between census times. Um, but it gives us a little bit broader category to look at for the comparison for them, one that plays into the projections, which uses census and ACS data.
ACS, okay.
So it helps us, um, get that projection number to be a little bit more, as accurate as a projection number can really kind of be.
Great.
Anyone else?
Go ahead.
Okay, great. So, we look at, like I said, the, the profile of, of Wood Dale. Who's here? We look at the people, but then we also look at the housing stock. Um, and so we look at current day, what's here now. So single-family, multifamily, townhomes, mobile, um, and then other, whatever other may be. Um, but we also look at the capacity for new development and growth. And we do that in, in conjunction with your community development staff, looking at parcels and buildings that are currently vacant, and also looking at your zoning code, um, your most, your most recent zoning code. And the question that we ask is, based on, um, your zoning categories that are currently in place, based on what is currently vacant, and based on development priorities, whether they be on the books or kind of on a wish list, um, what type of housing can Wood Dale support out to 2040? And so you'll see that we do a total projected number of units, and then we break it down by housing type. So with the new population numbers, so we take this new population, this 18,448, and say, how does that fit into your housing stock? And so actually, what your demand, what your housing balance profile comes out is that more people will want to be in Wood Dale than can be supported by the housing stock if there was to be no change to either your development patterns or your zoning code. And so you'd be able to meet about 58% of the demand for multifamily and 30% of the demand for single-family homes. And so what we say with this report is, obviously, these are based on projections. It's not a concrete number. It's based on a no-change model, so saying that if you continued business as usual. So the question that comes out of this report that we encourage people to think about is they either engage in a full-scale housing plan or their comprehensive plan, or whatever the next step is, is, is this the direction that you wanna continue to grow as Wood Dale? Um, what are the preferences for multifamily? What are the preferences for single-family? What are preferences for rehab and infill? There's not a lot of land for you guys to do, um, just new greenfield development. So where are we infilling? Where are we being strategic about where new homes are going? Are they rental? Are they ownership? Are they senior? Are they family? There's just a whole list of questions that we then, um, say to folks to maybe consider based on this possible projection.
Alderman Messina?
Can we assume that number's probably gonna be on the low end, being that we have all this projected growth that we anticipate with the Elgin O'Hare expansion, some of our downtown development stuff?
Mm-hmm.
We can safely assume we said nothing changes. That's the number, so that's probably on the low end?
Right, and so we actually started this before Elgin O'Hare really kicked off. We did see the plans, um, that had been drawn up at the time, but the numbers, um, are not, are projected in this population. So all of that development is not included in these numbers. Um, and then we looked at the old comprehensive plan, so we'll get to that in a minute, um, which, and some of the downtown planning areas around your metros, metro station. And so one of the issues, and we'll talk about this in a minute, is that the plan is from 1997, which in the world of planning is a little bit old, um, and a little bit before, um, some real estate changes and just regional changes and also local changes. So you have to kind of consider how doing an updated comprehensive plan and having updated, um, either the vision, um, also the demographics and, and kind of what the city would like to see would affect some of these numbers. But you're correct to say that this is probably on the low end, yeah. Any other questions?
Any other question? All right, go ahead. Thank you.
And so we think about, um, with these numbers, what are some things that, that we can recommend, um, for Wood Dale to, to consider? Um, what are things that are feasible to implement? Um, and kind of what are the next steps after a plan like this? So our first recommendation, um, is really an update to the comprehensive plan. As I mentioned, comprehensive plan from 1997. It's probably a little bit outdated, just thinking about what the real estate and, and commercial markets have looked like since then, um, thinking about how demographics of not only, um, the county in terms of age, uh, and dem, and demographics have changed, people's desire to rent versus own. All of those things that would be updated in a recent comprehensive plan and kind of put you on a different scale. Um, when you look at the current plan and the current downtown plan, you'll see, for example, um, the proposed developments around the metro station and just the scale, the number of units, the type of units, and all of those things that, um, back when they were done made sense, but maybe now maybe need to be reevaluated. And so really, just kind of getting an up-to-date, um, plan would be our first recommendation. The other recommendation, so when we first started this plan, I know you guys have since completed just a new senior development, or it's in process, yes, down the street. Um, but when we first started this, um, there wasn't really a lot of movement on, on senior housing. Um, and we see senior housing not only for the region, but also for the municipalities, and this cluster is gonna be the fastest-growing, um, age cohort for all four communities. And so really thinking about, do seniors want to be able to age in the home that they're in now? Do they wanna stay in their single-family home or townhouse or whatever they're in? Do they prefer to move to a multifamily option? Um, are they gonna be moving in with family? If they do move, who's going to move into those homes? Um, so a lot of things to think about as you think about, um, accommodating your senior population and where folks are gonna go over the next 30 years. Um, one of the other things that we heard was that there were a handful of multifamily properties in the community where the staff had some management concerns and, and thinking about what that, um, would look like for the community. And so one suggestion, um, that we make when, when folks have that complaint is looking into a crime-free rental ordinance. And crime-free rental can look like a lot of different things for a lot of different places. Um, I know that you guys do some registering here with your landlords and their, and your rental properties. And for some communities, that's as far as they, um, choose to go. Um, other communities have different types of training programs in collaboration with their police departments, in collaboration with maybe their code enforcement staff. Um, so you can really look at a lot of things. And we've included a link here. Um, one of the things that we also get into with crime-free housing is, is home rule versus non-home rule and what folks are able to do legally with that. And so the Mayor's Caucus, um, which is a nonprofit that represents actually all of the mayors in this, in the seven-county region, um, did a legal study with Anselk Link Law Firm, which is a law firm that deals mostly with municipal, um, issues to really kind of examine, um, as a pilot in the south suburbs, what communities can do as home-rule communities, as non-home rule communities, um, around multifamily management, around crime-free housing, around code enforcement, and around inspection. And so, um, we have it linked here, but I'll also go ahead and email that uh, to the community development staff, um, so that can be on hand as well and reviewed. And the last thing that we talk about, um, is kind of this accessibility and openness. And so this kind of goes back to a couple of different things. So we talked about senior housing and, and making sure, you know, do folks wanna either stay in their home or move to another home, um, in the community? So looking at the things like visitability ordinances, which talks about, um, you know, do you put stairs in front of buildings? How wide are your doorways? Are there bathrooms on the first floor? Are, are folks able to, as they kind of age and have different needs, able to find a variety of housing types, um, in Wood Dale? So really kind of thinking about that and keeping the community, um, open and inclusive in that sense? And then this is something that we always put. Um, it's not a problem here. It is, it has been a problem in some of the other communities in the cluster, but just making sure, um, that all designs are appropriately following Fair Housing Acts, which I know your staff does a, a great job of doing. The other thing that we heard from residents for these last two was that folks really actually liked your website, um, but they also said that they had a little bit of a hard time, um, when we started finding things on your website. And I know since we've started this, you guys have revamped your website, um, and it looks great. Um, but just making sure that resident information section has, um, all of the things that folks will need in pertaining to housing, um, a statement of welcome, um, permit forms, contact information, and all of that. And then also making sure that, um, the website has a place where people can file housing-specific complaints. Um, folks talked about that they could leave general comments on the website, but they weren't sure where to go or, um, how to contact anyone at the city if they had a discrimination, um, complaint. And so maybe just making some of those, um, recommendations. The last thing, um, that I did wanna mention, and we can again talk about any of the other recommendations if you've gone through and had any questions. Um, but if you turn to page 79, um, of the plan, one of the other components of, of this project was to do a visualization, um, on a priority area that was selected, um, by the village. And so for Wood Dale, we looked at 116 to 1, to 146 West, West Irving Park. Um, and so we look at the top picture, you'll see is kind of the current state. It's the, the parcels broken out in the existing buildings. Uh, and then we work with city staff and also through the public engagement process to think about what folks would like to see there, um, and did a rendering. So for this site, uh, folks were interested in some mixed-use options with retail on the bottom, and we did, uh, two stories of residential on the top. You'll see in the bottom picture, so the building on the left, um, the city was particularly interested in, in showcasing, um, a dining option with a patio, so we went ahead and put that in. Um, parking and access through the back alleyways. Um, so you'll see that there. And then the landscaping frontage, um, on the front of Irving Park Road. So I will say that these visualizations don't take into account, kind of the financial piece of what it would do, be to create something like this. Uh, but it kind of gives folks an idea, um, as we talk about what type of housing folks are interested in, what kind of capacity you can, uh, provide as a city, what some of these options could look like. And so I just wanted to specifically point that out, um, because that is a deliverable that's listed in our MOU. And so sometimes folks glance over that or don't really understand, um, what those pictures are. So, um, I will end it there. That's the general perception of the plan, but open it up if folks have, um, some more specific questions or general questions about the process and, or what comes next, or CMAP or anything else.
You know, I do.
Alderman Messina?
Somebody's gotta care, right? Hey, so, we have a plan, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, what's the plan to work with city staff?
Mm-hmm.
Does your, do you end here?
Um, so there's a couple of different options of things we can do. So, um, in terms of working specifically with Wood Dale, as I mentioned, one of the first recommendations, um, that we did was suggest a new comprehensive plan. Um, so as a city, you can do that a number of different ways. We have a program called, um, our LTA program, Local Technical Assistance, which is actually how this study was done. Um, and we use a combination of federal grant dollars and our federal transportation dollars to do these types of plans, either, um, sub-area plans such as this or full-scale comprehensive plans at no cost to communities. And we do that through an open call for projects, um, every May. It's a one-page application that just says, tell us who you are and, and what you wanna do. Um, and we evaluate those, uh, throughout the summer and make, um, evaluations and make final project selections every October. So that's one way to get, uh, the comprehensive plan done. Or of course, there's a number of planning firms that would be more than happy to come out, um, and do a comprehensive plan for you. Probably not through a federal grant program, but it's a conversation for the staff. Um, so we can go that route. Uh, the county also has this and is kind of working through, um, what they wanna do is the subregional approach. So we've done this cluster. We're in the middle right now of another DuPage cluster in Hanover Park, Glendale Heights in West Chicago. And so they're thinking larger-scale DuPage County, how they wanna move forward with the housing strategy. So there'll be some opportunity to move forward with that. One of the projects that was just accepted this past October will be doing an, an affordable housing study, um, through Impact DuPage, which is out of the DuPage Public Health Department, um, and looks at five indicators. And they were having a little bit of trouble putting together their housing section, so we're gonna do that for them. Um, so we'll be coming back to all the communities in DuPage to kind of expand on their housing work. Um, and so those are probably the most logical next steps. Yeah.
Do you have a follow-up, Alderman Messina?
I do.
Go ahead.
I don't wanna disappoint Mike, so let me ask him one more question.
Let's keep the comments, just the questions.
So, we know there's a housing gap, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is there, maybe this might be a question for staff, but is there gonna be a plan to work with attracting developers or realtors?
Go ahead, Ms. Smith. Oh, Mr. Cage. Go ahead.
Just briefly, um, now we have the report, the recommendations. Uh, thank you. This is all very good information, good data. This gives us the tools to start looking into that and to answer your question quickly. Yes, absolutely.
Awesome, thank you.
Alderman Catalano?
On page seven, I'm a little confused about the, uh, the change in the average home sale price.
I'm sorry, what page were you on?
On page seven.
Seven.
The graph, the last, the last one. It's got Bensonville up 17%, and then Wood Dale down 21%. Could you explain that?
Uh, yes, so...
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Oh, go ahead. Um, so that number is looking at, um, home, home sales. And so what we saw in Bensonville, so Bensonville was the only community out of the four that actually, um, had a raise in, in their, um, sale. But it's also because they had the largest drop in availability when they lost all of their homes to the O'Hare expansion. And so it just creates a little bit of a different market type. So I wouldn't necessarily say that they're doing better than Wood Dale. They're just working with a little bit less than everyone else. And so they just had a different type of market demand.
Do you have a follow-up, Alderman Catalano?
So that's not home prices, for instance?
Right.
Alderman Jacob?
Well, Alderman Catalano just said that, I mean, these are average home sale prices, correct?
The average home sale prices, yes. The average home sale prices, yes, but sometimes that's driven, obviously, by demand, so are people paying below asking, are people paying at asking, are people paying above asking, and half of that is kind of driven by the demand of the, of the stock.
You have a follow-up? Go ahead.
Yeah, one of our former aldermen is now a state representative, I know she was planning on having a session with the, uh, county assessor, because, you know, it's a lower property tax, so-
Sure.
I'm sure she'd like to see where some of this information came from.
Yeah, if you, if Kelly has or Ed has that contact information, we're happy to, um, reach out. We have a legislative staff, but we're happy to get the report to them, um, and set up some time with our legislative staff and, uh, planning staff to talk through things like that, so, um, if we can just get that contact information, we'll set that up.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you guys for your time.
Good job.
Thank you.
Uh, we do have one more item under the mayor's report, uh, placed at your, right at the dais, in front of you, a resolution, it's not one we have to pass this evening, just something that's going on, there was a discussion this morning from, uh, DMMC, mayors and managers, regarding, uh, basically, use tax, motor fuel tax, video gaming, casino and wireless nine-one-one surcharges. According to the numbers we received this morning, approximately all DuPage municipalities are losing about five million dollars per month. It's being withheld, not losing, it's being withheld by the state. So, there's going to be a meeting coming up in two weeks, unless anybody has any objection, we're going to vote in favor of this resolution to protect and to, uh, try and collaborate with the state to receive our money that we are losing. Basically, for Wooddale, to put it in simple terms, the use tax, the motor fuel tax, and the video gaming, probably equates to roughly approximately sixty thousand, is that correct, Mr. Wilson? Uh, per month. And we not, may not see a resolution, maybe until April. There is a big vote next week in Springfield, I believe on the tenth, if it actually happens, we don't know, um, but if anybody has any real objection to this resolution, I'd like to know before we, you know, vote yes to this. I put it on the dais, this just happened today, it just happened this morning. So. I didn't, I didn't think we'd have a problem asking for our money, unless, of course, we want to borrow it at a percentage, they'd be willing to do that. Yeah, they're not going to give us the interest either. But if you'd like to know more about that discussion at DMMC, you can talk to me after the meeting and I'll fill you in. All right, next, city manager's report.
One item, Mr. Mayor, just want to, uh, remind residents to get out and pick up your leaves and, and mow your lawn, because the last pickup is November thirtieth, so do your yard work now, uh, time is almost over.
November thirtieth? I thought it was the fifteenth.
That's thirty.
Oh, okay.
Sometimes they do a couple extra after that as well.
Oh, okay, because I thought I saw somewhere the middle, two, second week, okay. That's good to know.
Alderman Smarsky, yes.
Just to the city manager, also, please, keep from blowing your weeds and your grass into the culverts of the city, because they do block our city sewers up. Bag your grass, please.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Catalano?
Yeah. Um, maybe this is a question for Matt, when is this, uh, street sweepers coming out?
Mr. York.
Street sweepers were out this past week, and then they'll be out the week of Thanksgiving, and that'll be the, that'll be the last one for this year.
Matt, just, just to clarify, they're not here to pick up the leaves, their, their equipment's not really equipped for that, correct?
Yeah, the street sweepers are here to pick up whatever debris is in the street. Please do not blow your leaves out into the street for them to be picked up. Our street sweepers do not have that functionality.
But- Alderman Catalano, go ahead.
But the private company we hired, they have that-
No, no.
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 We do not have a leaf pickup service in town, so if you have leaves in your yard, please rake them up and put them in the bags.
Go ahead, Alderman Catalano.
About the leaves in the street?
They will pick up the leaves that are in the street-
Okay.
-that fall on the street, but we do not want them to be artificially fallen into the street.
Okay.
Right, there's only a few against the curb, they line up against the curb, but as the residents are doing their lawn, I would imagine they're going to just one quick pass on the curb.
Alderman Smarsky.
This is the contracted street sweeper, is this city?
Contractor, correct, Matt?
No, I, I just want to-
Mr. York.
Yes, this is a contracted street sweeper, we do not own a street sweeper anymore.
That contract started already, correct?
That contract is almost done for the first year, yes.
Yes. All right, next, we had the consent agenda, I just want to make sure, are all the numbers as on the, okay. If there's no objections, entertain a motion, I have Alderman Woods.
That's poll number one.
Poll number one?
Yeah.
Any other items? Anyone else? Okay, then entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman Smarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes, next, next, I'll make a motion to approve the items on the agenda, starting with item number two, approval of partial payment request number two to Martam Construction for the Ward Two, Phase Two project, and not to exceed amount of two hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Item number three, an ordinance authorizing a variation to the City of Wooddale separation distance requirement for the construction of a detached garage located at two thirty-six Oakwood Drive, Wooddale, Illinois. Item number four, an ordinance amending Chapter Five, Article Three, Section Five Point Three Oh Five, the Admissible Code of the City of Wooddale, to increase the number of Class R licenses authorized for issuance. Item number five, a resolution seeking to approve a document entitled Comprehensive Response to Traffic Concerns Regarding the Implementation of Procedures for Handling Traffic Complaints. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sartino?
Yes.
Alderman Smarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chair reports, planning and zoning, Alderman Catalano?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No report.
Thank you. Public works, Alderman Woods?
No report, man.
Finance and administration?
No report, no report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, under other business, we do have one item, item number one from the consent agenda, I need a motion to approval of par- partial payment request, number one, to Nettle Creek Nursery for the Potter Street basin modification, not to exceed amount of sixty-five thousand, hundred sixty dollars and forty-five cents. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, this, uh, Matt, so, um, when I was out there a week ago, there were some things needed to be done, most of them are taken care of, but the big one of concern is the restrictor in there, which isn't an easy fix. Is that scheduled in the works to get done, to, to lower that? Because right now, presently, doesn't work.
Mr. York.
Yes, um, that, that is still in the hopper to be worked on as punch list item, uh, we have quite a bit of money left in retainage, but there is, uh, um, that, there was another email back and forth with Nettle Creek Nursery trying to get them to come out and schedule, and schedule, get us a schedule on that one.
And then, the cleaning out of, uh, same line, too, from pond to pond.
Go ahead, Mr. York.
I think we have a confusion of question, um, the question on this one, this is Nettle Creek Nursery, this is a Potter Street One project, the, what, um, I believe the pond that you're just talking about right now is the Elizabeth Court Pond?
Yes.
Yeah, so, the, the list of bills question was for this one, was for, um, for Potter Street, but yes, that project is still, um, the restrictor needs to be fixed, and it needs to be cleaned out, and we are, um, we are in, uh, frank discussions with, uh, with, um, them, and I'm actually having a meeting with them on Tuesday to, uh, get them to finalize that project.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have a follow-up?
Nope.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
My question to you, if it's a restrictor issue here, and it's on the list of bills we paid, so why are we paying for it if it ain't working right?
Mr. York, or you want to take that?
So-
Go ahead.
The, the question about the restrictor is, is regarding the Elizabeth Court Pond, the thing that was pulled off of the list of bills is the Potter Street Pond, so, I think there was just a confusion of which pond.
What about the sidewalk that's by the stoplight, is that fixed? Was that ours, or was that Potter?
Wait, wait, this is-
It's the same one, Potter.
Go ahead, Mr. York.
The Potter Street does not have a stoplight or a sidewalk.
This is the one by the condos.
This is the one by Pine.
Oh, by the nature.
The garbage one.
Go ahead.
All right, is that all?
Yeah.
Alderman Smarsky.
What is the total payments on this anyway, then, wasn't this under a grant fund, the city manager?
We did not receive a grant on this one.
We didn't get a grant for this one?
On this one.
Again, Mr. Smarsky.
All the questions tonight are about the Elizabeth one, uh, the Elizabeth Court one, we got the grant.
I apologize for getting the wrong-
We were supposed to get a-
Well, we're looking in the direction.
We applied-
I don't remember us not getting a memo about not getting a grant for this one.
Yeah, we applied for a grant for this one, we didn't get it, we-
So, what's the total?
We got the grant for the-
We received no grant on Potter Street at all.
What's the total, what's the total allocation?
Left on this, on Potter Street, Mr. York, you have that number?